Ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening and welcome to the October 14th regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I now call it Order. Let the record show that there's a quorum present. At this time, the Chair calls upon Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we're grateful together in this planning board meeting, grateful to represent the Rockingham County, both the people and the government that supports the people. We pray that as we discuss the various items on the agenda, that we might be guided by the spirit, that we be courteous, that we be understanding, fair, and be able to come to a decision in the best interest of all involved. Give thanks that we have such a great county, and bless us all to be attentive and be able to come to decisions quickly and rightly. In this we pray, in the name of our Savior, who is Jesus Christ, amen.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. So the agenda is adopted. Our next item is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I approve the minutes.
I have one question or one small point to bring up, and this is semantics, and I apologize. At one point in my time, my early career, I was an English teacher. We write in the minutes that a certain, somebody motioned, motioned really isn't a word, is that, can we change that to so-and-so moved? Because that's actually the correct terminology.
If you want to.
Moving forward, shall we do that?
We want to.
Okay, then, yeah, we can.
We do not have to change minutes because they're fine. I mean, the spirit of the minutes do not change at all. The mechanics do not change at all. It's semantics. It's Julie being picky again.
Did you offer an approval of the minutes?
Oh, yes, we should make the change.
Then I second the minutes.
Okay, then, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 9th, 2024 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Again, there's no opposition, so the minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is review procedures for evidentiary hearings, which includes our first case. This hearing is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing. That means it's like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this board must make its decision. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions, like rezoning cases. The board's discretion is limited. The board must base its decision upon competent, relevant, and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on the facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, excuse me, please focus on the facts and standard, not personal preference or opinion. Participation is limited. This meeting is open to the public. Everyone is welcome to watch. Parties withstanding have rights to participate fully. Parties may present evidence, call witnesses, and make legal arguments. Parties are limited to the applicant, the local government, and individuals who can show they will suffer special damages. Other individuals may serve as witnesses when called by the board. General witness testimony is limited to facts, not opinions. For certain topics, this board needs to hear opinion testimony from expert witnesses. These topics include projections about impacts on property values and projections about impacts of increased traffic. Individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts and provide the factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. At this time, for our first case, I'm going to ask all non-attorneys who are going to speak to please come forward and be sworn in. If you'd be so kind to place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm the evidence and testimony you shall present to the Rockingham County Planning Board on the matter at hand shall be the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you. You can be seated, and whoever is going to speak first may remain in the podium. Actually, you can all be seated. We'll have Mr. Mark.
This is our, ah, typo, special use permit, not rezoning, but special use permit 2024-22. It's a request for a special use permit to install a public utility major slash, it's a gas compressor station, to be located on a property that is currently addressed as 595 Old US 29 Highway. This particular area will be split off from that address parcel, and will receive a new address at that time. That's why it's only a portion of the tax pen. It's located in the Ruffin Township. Here's our vicinity map. You can see we're all the way up in the northeast quadrant of the county. Aerial zoning, this is residential agricultural. This isn't allowed special use in the residential agricultural zoning district. That's the whole parcel. You can see on this map, we've got our environmental, and it's aerial. This is the O2 land class, generally stated to stay open in rural environment, low-density uses. That field into the north part of that property is about the general area for the site. I zoomed in for you right here. As you can see around the blue outline there, that's the area in question. You can see a solar farm just north of this. There's another utility station north of it. This is not a, this is not a use that's abnormal to the area. Furthermore, and with the site plan, you can see that they've, with the design layout and everything, they've met all the standards in the UDO for use, the use. So they've got documents in your packet that I gave you that support the four criteria towards the special uses, about no material endangerment of the public health, the use, located complies with all the regulations of the UDO. It does. The use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining property. That's for them to argue, and the use is consistent with the adopted plans, which it does, or which it is. So staff feels that this use has met all the criteria of our UDO and land use plan. If you have any questions, I'm here at this time regarding those regulations, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions from ours on these?
I have one question. Was there any, did you get any phone calls, emails?
I got exactly one phone call with an inquiry regarding this, not four against, it was just a question.
Okay. Does, do these gas compressor stations leak noise? I mean, is it a noisy?
I could better answer that question. All right. I'll get you, just click that button when you're ready.
Thank you, Marcy. For the record, please state your name and your business address will do.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Amy Kraut. I'm an attorney at Smith &amp; Anderson, representing the applicant in this case. My business address is 150 Fayetteville Street, Suite 2300, Raleigh, North Carolina. First, we'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity to be here and county planning staff for working with us on this application. We always appreciate the opportunity to work with the county on these important projects. We would ask that everything, our presentation, the documents we hand up, this staff report be included in the record for this case. As went over, I'd just always like to highlight, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, and there's four standards that we have already outlined justification statements to in our application. We'll be further elaborating them throughout the course of this presentation. First, just a little bit about property location and site selection. This property is located at the eastern edge of the county off of Old US 29. The special use permit will cover approximately 45 acres. It's highlighted on red in your screen, so you can see that. We did provide a legal description of that 45 acres to county planning staff for review. The parent parcel is 200 acres, and Enbridge, formerly Dominion Energy, is under contract to purchase that property. In terms of reason for this site selection, there are several. First, it's a strategic location to efficiently add compression to the natural gas pipeline. At, you know, certain points of the pipelines, these compressor stations are needed, and there's already one a half mile up the street, which is another reason, is proximity to the existing station, which will eventually be decommissioned once this one is built. This property also offers significant acreage that's set up in a really great way. To the north and to the east, there is existing vegetation that provides significant existing buffer that will be preserved, and where the substation is going is already cleared, so less environmental impact. In terms of what a compressor station is and why it's necessary, this is my non-engineering attempt at it. We have engineers here who can answer that a little more fully later on in the presentation. But essentially, as natural gas travels through the pipeline system, it loses pressure over long distances, and these compressor stations maintain pressure along pipelines to make sure the natural gas keeps flowing through. In particular, this compressor station will make sure the large amount of natural gas needed for customers and power generation in the area is delivered through the pipeline system efficiently. Terms of zoning and requested use, this staff presentation and staff report covered most of this. This is considered a public utility major that's allowed in the RA district with a special use permit, same zoning as the current compressor station right up the road. This staff report did found that the application and site plan meet the requirements of UDO 62.73, which is standard number two, and this request is consistent with a comprehensive land use plan and its guiding principles of coordinated growth and economic prosperity. It's also consistent with the future land use map designation of O2 rural land, because it's designed in a way that's sensitive to the existing rural area. Again, so large acreage with significant vegetative buffer and adding additional buffer along the roadway and sides. In terms of the site plan, this is just kind of the large overview. Again, you'll see this is a 45-acre parcel, and only about 10 acres of it will be used for the compressor station. And again, most of that vegetation to the north and east will be preserved. And at this point, I'm going to call up James Shepherd from HDR to talk a little bit more through the compliance with the UDO and site design.
Thank you. My name is James Shepherd. I work for HDR, and my business address is 526 South Church Street, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I've been a professional engineer working on land development for the past 20 years, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. And so, a little bit about the site plan and the compliance of it. As you go through this, one of the things we were very concerned about is making sure we met all the buffering requirements. So we chose to utilize the existing trees, as was mentioned, on the property where possible. In addition to that, we're adding a 15-foot landscape buffer along the road frontage. And again, anywhere that we need to insert additional trees on the southern property line, we'll be doing that. We did do cultural investigation of the property as well as environmental investigation of the property. We identified one stream that you'll note on the site plan. We designed the property in an effort to avoid any impacts to that stream, which complies with the UDO ordinance. In addition to that, we'll be using a fence surrounding the property to make sure that we meet the ordinance requirements. That'll be six feet high with three strands of barbed wire. And then finally, we'll, we're going to meet the ordinance with a maximum height of 50 feet for the buildings. So, and this site complies with all those requirements. We will be getting a driveway permit, obviously, but the site has been designed in accordance with all standards and also environmental compliance standards.
And just for reference, this is a rendering of what the site will eventually look like. So you can see that vegetative buffer along the front roadway and the preserve buffer around the property. Now I'm going to call up Christopher Norcross from Enbridge to talk a little bit about the company and how this station will be used to protect public health and safety. Chris, will you state your name for the record?
Yes, Christopher Norcross.
And can you talk a little bit about your role at Dominion, now Enbridge, and your qualifications?
Yes, ma'am. I am the manager of engineering projects for Enbridge Gas, North Carolina. I've worked for the company for 18 years, and of those 18, 10 of them, I've been the manager of the engineering department. I'm also a licensed professional engineer for the state of North Carolina.
All right. Will you talk a little bit about just this compressor station operations and design?
Yes, ma'am.
And then you can use that.
Okay, absolutely. So to start off with, I wanted to, I guess, sort of address the first elephant in the room for us, which is Enbridge has purchased the PSNC assets here in North Carolina. I do want to mention as part of that, though, that most of the people who are working on this project, as well as all the people who are in the operations group who will maintain this compressor station going forward, are all people who have worked for PSNC for a very long period of time. In fact, most of them, like myself, went through the acquisition that Dominion had back in 2019. So we've been through this before on our side, but at the end of the day, it's still the same people that are doing the work, and it's still the same people who operate and maintain, who live in the community when they're doing so. What Enbridge does do for us is it brings a lot of backing to our work groups. Enbridge has worked in the oil and gas industry since 1949, and they operate across all of the United States and Canada, and they have very large natural gas assets, which they bring a lot of key in background to bring to our project. The one thing that I do want to mention is that we, as Enbridge, have a very strict set of values that they adhere to, and they are very similar to the ones that we had with Dominion Energy, as well as the ones that we have in our PSNC energy as well. And those values are safety, integrity, respect, inclusion, and high performance. And all of those values are what we commit to and what we strive to obtain in all of our project work, to make sure that we maintain the health, safety, and the general welfare of the public for everything that we do. As I said, Enbridge is proud to move North American energy. Energy is one thing that everyone deals with in every day of their life, whether they're using their cellphone, whether they're heating their homes, whether they're fueling for transportation, their form of transportation. All of these things we touch with our industry, and we're very proud of what we do. And at the end of the day, our number one priority as a natural gas distributor in this part of the state of North Carolina is we're concerned with the safety of our neighbors, our employees, and the environment. Now, at the end of the day, for us, safety is the number one thing, and nothing else matters. To this point, we do a lot of stuff on our system to make sure that we're maintaining the fitness of the system and ensuring that it's safe and compliant. We monitor the system 24/7, 365 days a year, by a gas control system that monitors the system remotely. We do continual inspections on the pipelines and facilities to determine that they are operating safely and efficiently and maintain reliable performance. We do regular right-of-way surveillance, both through the air and on the ground, to watch for potential issues and hazards and correct them if they're discovered. And we also monitor our pipelines through multiple computerized systems, each of which focus on different areas, thereby giving overlapping and distinct layers for leak detection and safety monitoring. Now to the station itself, which we have denoted as Ruffin Compressor Station 2. This is a new compressor station. It will support our natural gas pipeline project that we're currently in development. It's called T15. T15 is a 1960s vintage pipeline that runs through the area that has reached the end of its useful life and that we are in a process of replacing. As part of that, we will be also increasing its size to meet the growth for the, our service territory, and by utilizing modern construction techniques, we intend to continue to provide safer and liable service to the entire region of natural gas service. Along with providing growth to meet demand and to provide this reliable service to pipeline and proposed modern compressor station, will also help to ensure compliance with safety regulations and help us reliably meet the state's carbon reduction goals. One of those main efforts that we're going to be helping out with to meet those carbon reduction goals is through our assistance with Duke Energy and their carbon plan. This project will help serve not only Enbridge Gas customers, but also Duke Energy's coal and natural gas conversion project for its electric generation. The new compressor station will replace the existing compressor station, but as Amy mentioned, it's located about a half a mile north of this proposed site. Once this project is complete, the existing compressor station will be decommissioned.
Let me interrupt you at that point. When you say decommissioned, in addition to ceasing to operate, does it mean deconstruction of the buildings and?
It will eventually, yes. As part of the project, so the existing compressor station is not large enough to serve the needs of the new pipeline system. So once the new compressor station is in place and the new pipeline is operational, we'll be able to basically turn off, decommission that site, and then depending on various other things, either the equipment will be moved to another location, or it will be sold off as salvage and removed from site. Either way, it'll be removed from site.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So as part of our project, we have multiple layers of permitting that we have to go through. This S U P hearing is certainly one of the first layers that we are proceeding through. This compressor station is regulated at both the state and the federal level, and is subject to inspections throughout that entire process. The station has been designed using equipment that's best-in-class technology to reduce emissions below the EPA and North Carolina DEQ standards, air quality standards, and which have been established to be protected, which have been established to protect the health and environment and the public. This compressor station will require a synthetic minor air permit from DEQ, and they are responsible for the oversight of the environmental compliance for the station. In addition to the initial air quality permit that we have to obtain, we are also subject to stack testing in the future by a third party and as reported to N C D E Q. And we are also due regular compliance inspections of our entire system. This includes valves, cathodic protection, things such as that, and they are regularly reported to the N C U C, the North Carolina Utilities Commission. And in addition to all of this, we also have the regular maintenance required by the manufacturer that we do on just about a daily basis on a site such as this. In addition to those safeguards, we also, as I mentioned earlier, the stations in our system are monitored 24/7 by our gas control systems that are remote from the site. On the site itself, we will have various measures to ensure safety, including a fence, cameras, key card entry access, motion sensors, and intrusion alarms. And beyond that, various systems will also be used to protect facilities such as fire detection and suppression, methane detection, and a manual, remote, and automatic emergency shutdown process they can initiate. On site, we expect to have one to four employees on a typical day. And so overall, the traffic impact should be limited to just those employees and limited to maybe once a month deliveries. And finally, one of the things we definitely wanted to address, because it is, rather, nor the operation, we did want to address that we expect the noise to be, to not exceed 55 decibels at the property line, running at full capacity. If you'll notice at the chart there, that more or less computes to between either a floor fan and an air conditioning unit. The 55 decibels is not necessarily a requirement here from a permitting standpoint, but it is a FERC standard, which Enbridge is commits to, to make sure that it is at that level or lower at the property line of the station. Additional abatement measures that are included in the design include the compressors, which are actually installed inside of buildings that contain insulation to ensure that noise is kept at a minimum. Also, mufflers and silencers are installed on the exhaust of each turbine unit, as well as any blowdown stacks which are used in emergency events. Again, we did want to point out that we did purchase a very large property, and one of the reasons why we purchased this large of the property was to help reduce our impact on our neighbors and to limit this noise impact. The 55 decibels is a design basis for the project. We are still in the design process for this compressor station, so it is likely that that number will be less than 55 decibels, but decibels is what we want to make sure that we commit to. And finally, I do want to, as sort of my closing comments, just mention how important this project is, not only to Enbridge Gas, but also to the region as a whole, and we have an obligation to get it right to the community. Enbridge is committed to delivering a safe and reliable design that will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or welfare, and we are committed to being good stewards to all the communities that we will work with in this project. Thank you.
All right, next, I'm going to call up Mike Elwell. He is an appraiser who performed an impact study for us, and he'll be talking about the third requirement of no substantial injury to value of adjoining or abutting property. Mr. Elwell, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Mike Elwell. I live at 404 Top Water Lane in Greensboro, and I'm a real estate appraiser with Cushman and Wakefield.
And how long have you been a real estate appraiser?
I began my career in 2002, so over 20 years doing appraisals.
If you'd like to tender, Mr. Elwell, as an expert witness.
Yes.
Mr. Elwell, I'm going to pass this out. Can you just identify this document and let us know if it is the impact study that you prepared?
Yes, this is what it is.
If I may, I'd like to hand this up and introduce it into the record, and then I will go this way.
So I was asked to take a look at the impact that a gas compressor station might have on real estate value of surrounding and abutting properties. In order to do this, I looked at three different compression stations, including the Ruffin one station, and I found sales of nearby properties, in this case, some residential properties, and I compared those properties with the market to determine if I felt that there was an impact happening to their, to their values. In the process of the study, what I found is that the properties that were near these gas compression stations were selling within the range of what other properties were selling for, of other similar properties, and that there was no indication that there was a diminishment of value to these properties that were surrounding the gas compression stations. One of the parts- One of the parts of doing this, I do a lot of work in the, in this field in utilities, so I also took a look at some power stations, switching stations, and the like, to see if there was anything I could garner from those studies as far as a singular station that would be causing impairment to the properties surrounding. And in those studies as well, I was finding that these stations generally don't have any impact on the surrounding property values. And so, I felt comfortable that this, the current gas compression statement, station that's being talked about today won't have an impact on the surrounding properties.
Any questions for Mr. Elwell?
Without taking the time to go through this whole document, I don't think so.
Just to conclude, throughout the course of the presentation and in the application materials, Enbridge has presented that the use will not materially endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare. This is a highly licensed and regulated facility, and this special use permit is a part of that licensing, and they are committed to reducing noise and impact on neighbors through safety procedures and operations. As you heard from the staff report and Mr. Shepherd's testimony, this use is compliant with the U D O requirements and regulations. And from Mr. Elwell's property, it won't substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And finally, from, again, the staff report and our application, the use is consistent with any adopted plans that encompass the property subject to the application. We have a team here willing to answer any questions that you might have. Otherwise, we ask that you grant this special use permit request. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
I have a few questions. If somebody else wants to go first, though.
Ladies first.
Thank you. I'll need an engineer.
You'll need an engineer?
Yeah.
Site plan?
Probably both of them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First question is, why exactly is there a need for this compressor station at this particular location?
Yes, ma'am. So, the compressor station is needed to increase the pressure of the gas at this location so we can continue to serve the customers further downstream. We only get certain pressure guarantees from our source gas, which is Transco, and we have to take that, the pressure that they give us, and then compress it up to make sure that we can move the volumes that we need downstream. And this site has been selected, number one, because we already have a compressor station close proximity, and number two, because hydraulically, it works very well for the overall system.
And sort of a two-part question. How many of these compressor stations are there in Rockingham County, or what is the distance, say, to the next one? Or how far apart, and how much area do they cover?
I can't speak for how many are in Rockingham County. I can speak how many we have in Rockingham County, which is one.
Okay.
The side just north of here is the only one that we have in Rockingham County. And the next one that we have is 40-some-odd miles further south and just past Roxboro.
Okay. So, they're not, it's not something that you would need multiples of in a single county?
No, ma'am. Not for us.
Okay. And what are the potential hazards? Leaks, explosions, biohazards, that kind of thing?
So, a leak is always a possibility. I can't say that it's not, but we do have a pretty robust system to detect those leaks, both through methane detection and then onsite personnel. The site will be manned during normal business hours and then monitored through gas controls. So, anytime a pressure reduction or unrealized pressure reduction or something that wasn't expected will happen, we'll be able to respond to it.
If there's a leak?
So, typically, the leak is just released into the atmosphere. Natural gas is lighter than air, so it disperses into air.
And are the, I understand this is a rather large piece of property, but for those living in proximity, are they notified or what's done about that? Or is it necessary to notify them?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question. Sorry.
In the event of a leak?
Right.
Oh, in the event of a leak?
Or a biohazard, resulting biohazard, like underground or anything?
So, once again, natural gas is lighter than air, so there's not much of a, natural gas can't contaminate the ground, I guess is maybe what I'm trying to say. But if there is a release of gas, it depends on the severity of that, but if we do work with local first responders to make sure that they are trained to respond to these sites, and in fact, I'm almost positive we've worked with the group there in Roughen, has come, I believe they have come to our fire pit training, where we train them to respond to these incidents. Given the size of the property, I would expect any kind of danger will be contained to the property based on the area that we have and what we're dealing with, so.
And if you have a leak, do you notify neighbors or the people living in proximity to it?
Typically, we depend on first responders to do that. If they are in danger, then they will be helping us contact them.
Okay. And, yeah, does, I mean, you have the smell, would that, can you, like, could a neighbor smell it?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, you can smell natural gas because of the capillary gas. You can smell it at a well before.
The date the project will be completed and this station online, when do you, what's the projection on that?
Currently, we're projecting for it to be completed in 2027.
Okay. And the last question. Are employees on-site 24/7?
They are not on-site 24/7. Typically, they'll be on-site in normal business hours, except during the coldest months, whenever we, whenever we'll have the highest runtime and the potential for an issue could be the highest, so then they'll be there more often.
Okay. But is the site monitored 24/7?
Absolutely monitored 24/7 by our gas control.
Yeah, with somebody that can get there quickly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
Yes, thank you. I'm referring back to your report from Cushman and Wakefield here. Having been a real estate appraiser myself, I'm always interested in comparable sale information. And I'm assuming that these properties you list on pages 18, 19, and 20 are what you offer as instances of comparable sales in making your judgment that there was no impact on other properties, value of properties in that area. Is that correct?
Correct. So, yes, so basically, what I did is what we would call a period sale analysis. So, these are properties that have sold, and I'm looking in the market to see if that property against other properties that have sold, what is the, where does this property fall within that?
Those are actual confirmed sales of properties.
These are, these are sales that took place in the marketplace.
All right. I got you. Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Bernie?
Can you tell me the normal life expectancy of one of these facilities? Is there a normal life expectancy?
It all depends on ultimately, maintenance of the facility. If it's well-maintained, it really doesn't have a life expectancy. It can go as long as we're doing what we're supposed to do with maintenance.
The reason for the question was simply the fact that, why are we replacing the old?
The old one is undersized for the amount of gas that will flow through it.
Can you or anybody tell me the history of the safety record of the old facility? Have there been any? If I remember right, you said it's been back since 65, or did I? The compressor station?
That was there was since 63, I believe, and then it was rebuilt in 2008.
Okay, so the safety record is what I'm getting at of that.
Yes. Well, we have had no incidences at that facility.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Jeff?
You spoke about that you've worked with the Roughen Fire Department. So, they have a protocol to go by from Enbridge in case of an accident, and do they have access to get into the facility if it's non-manned and there's an incident?
I can't speak for what the fire department does or doesn't have as far as their procedure. I'm not close enough to that. I'm not an expert in that aspect. I do know that all fire departments that we work with are invited to our Cary LNG facility to participate in fire training, and we also have a fire liaison program that works closely with all fire departments in our service territory or along pipelines that we serve.
If the station's being non-manned, no one, there isn't something going on, do they have access or they know how to get into it?
I don't know that I can answer you directly on that question.
I would hope after 60 years of the existing facility, then it will, I think that's pretty 57, 24.
I would expect.
And I would say they would be up on their safety procedures if that was, would you say a half a mile from here?
Yeah, it's a half a mile away. We have one existing, right. In fact, I'm also the.
After 60 years of facility, our department, if I can.
Quick, for most of these facilities in the county everywhere, if the local fire department doesn't have the code, 911 usually does, someone with the fire marshal's office will go around and make sure that they have an access requirement for the local office in case of emergencies in almost every facility that we have that's secured. So, that's pretty standard.
We receive confirmation that that's correct, that they do have access, so what they said is accurate.
So, they would have the same, so the fire department would have a key card to get inside that, and I remember that being said, that the access is by key card, fenced, that kind of thing. So, you know, even if they have to cut the fence, they've still got to have a key card to get inside. So, is that something that typically will be left on-site with the fire department?
Yes, yes. So, I was informed that there's typically a lock box where there is a key that's contained inside the lock box, and the liaison program will work with the fire department so they're aware of that lock box location and how to get in, in case of emergency.
But Enbridge doesn't provide the training for the, for the fired or for the emergency responders on-site. They have to go, did I hear Cary, to participate in that training?
That's something that's commonly done.
So, that's, I guess it's a two-part thing, actually. So, you have the fire liaison program, where we do have two fire stations and meet with them and give them presentations about how to safely work with natural gas and what they, you know, the shuz and shudens around working around natural gas. And part two of that is we do have our fire pit training, which is located at our Cary facility, where you actually, they actually observe a controlled fire that they are trained on how to actually extinguish.
My correct statement? This site plan will have to be handled through the TRC?
It doesn't have to be. It can be if you want it to be, but like I said, this one meets all of our standards. They're going to have to get a DOT driveway permit, and the fire marshal automatically has to look at these regardless, from principle. So, I didn't really see the need to call a TRC when the three major points already have to be done regardless of our own ordinances. But like I said, y'all can add that if you want to. It's pretty much, meets all the basic requirements, though.
These are issues that the fire marshal usually addresses at those meetings.
Right, but they have to meet with the fire marshal regardless because of the nature of this use. So, they'll have to meet all those requirements for her anyway.
Okay.
Would the TRC, like, almost double-check to make sure that things are done, or does there need to be that redundancy?
For some things, yes, you need the redundancy, for other things, no.
Okay.
It can be handled on an individual basis, just like Marzey said. The fire marshal would have to look at this anyway.
So, that would be?
That would be adequate, the, okay.
Really no need to have engineering weigh on this. There's no utilities. Economic development doesn't need to weigh on this. There's nothing for that. A land surveyor doesn't, I mean, the other aspects of this don't have any, this isn't a project that would have a bearing on the whole community in that kind of manner, where you have the public coming every day and things like that. It's so self-contained that we can handle it with just our basic stuff.
You don't need N C dot?
There's no, there's not much traffic there.
Any other questions? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Before we, sorry?
I think there's someone else on the phone.
Well, I've got Lori Ray. Oh, that's you? Okay. Ms. Ray?
Yes.
If you would so kindly state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Lori Ray, and my property is at 1035 Old U.S. Highway 29, and the existing substation, pump station, is inset on my property. And I'm not against this. I just have some concerns about, I have an existing gas line that runs down through my property, and I had been working with Dominion. They were going to purchase my property, and I really didn't want to tear out, you know, all the trees and everything. And so, they decided to go next door. They will have to connect across my property somehow, and it is going to affect long-term what happens with my property. We run a sporting clay range there right now, Cosner Reserve, and it will, it will impact that and the business when they run that gas line through there and when they, you know, wherever they decide to put the new gas line, or if they're going to connect to the old one. I understand it's going to be a new one. And if it's cut diagonally from the, on page 11 that the attorney showed of where there is a creek that comes out under, it's like a spring that comes out under the ground, and then it goes down through my property. And I just want to make sure that the impact of where they go across and connect and do the right-of-way, that it does not impact my property. And if they do it across the front, it's the only road frontage left on that property that they would be doing a right-of-way through there. So, I'm not against this, but I do want it to be on record that I, this, I'm the only person that this is going to affect.
Have you had any conversations with the people from Enbridge?
No. The only conversations that I had was when Dominion was wanting to purchase the 40 acres on my land, and there's a cemetery there, an old cemetery, the Wright Cemetery, that's beside the existing station. And I just had a lot of concerns, and I didn't, I didn't want to sell that 40 acre. So, they were kind enough to go next door, which I'm okay with, but they still are going to have to run that line, and it's going to go through my property. And it's going to impact what future use, if I ever wanted to build on it and there's a gas right-of-way, there would be no building on it.
Myers, can we pull this up on the screen?
I think you've got a tighter site plan.
I've got a site plan. I would note that because this is a special use permit, you're looking at the use on the 45 acres, not at adjoining uses on adjoining lands. That being said, Dominion and Enbridge are committed to working with the property owner and have already started talking to her a little bit this evening and are committed to working with her on the location of that pipeline. But just as a reminder, this special use permit is just for this property.
Right.
Is that the shot you need?
Yeah, which of those is the, which of the lines on there is the, is the pipeline?
The pipeline?
You can see where the, you know, where there's a clearing, you know, usually you have a pipeline that shows that clearing.
I'm going to bring up our project manager to talk a little bit more about this, plant location.
Hey, oh, I didn't say my name earlier, but it's Josue Alcaraz. I work out of the 2020 Energy Drive Apex, North Carolina, office. Your question there, which one of these lines shows the pipeline? You can't see it? Well, yes, you can. It's the top right corner there. If you look at that, you see sort of an angle, maybe five, seven degrees angle south, going east of. east to west. That's our current pipeline.
Or John Doe Road?
Uh?
Is that the one?
Yes. So if you see this right here, that's our existing pipeline. And if I, sorry.
We're not seeing the mouse.
Yeah, sorry.
You won't see the mouse. It's-
It's, it's the one that intersects John Doe Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's that one up there.
Well, it's the one that, it's the one that runs alongside of the, the current station. Is that correct?
Correct.
Anyway, so it goes from the station to the southwest, or south, southeast?
Goes, yes, east. Most east.
So I'm kind of confused why there was a concern about the pipeline coming across her property, because that pipeline, that's the new, the old station is, almost abuts the sites for the new station.
No. The, the existing station insets, it's seven acres, and it insets on my property. So my property is to the north of that red zone of where they're going to, the existing property. All of that, that blue line all the way down through there, almost all of that is my property. And the existing gas line runs behind the subs, the, the current station. And with this new one, they are going to have to run a line, and it's going to have to go through my property. So, and I agree with what the attorney said. Yes, this is for this property, and this is a site plan for this property, but that gas has to go somewhere, and I'm the only adjoining property that it's going to come across. So it does affect me.
And if I, if I may, real quick, all that being said, that's not a matter for us to determine. We can permit this all day long. If they can't figure out how to connect, that's not a responsibility of the county.
Okay.
So they'll have other permitting requirements through other agencies that'll have to handle those kind of things. But if they can't find a way to make that connection, then regardless of what we decide today, that, that project's in the hands of somebody else at that point. All we're here to decide is whether that use on this property is sufficient and correct.
In other words, that, that issue is not under our jurisdiction?
Correct.
Yep, okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I think in essence, board members, what we're, what we're looking at here is a request to upgrade capacity and technology into a new gas compressor station, which is to replace an old one that is not capable of serving the existing and future needs of concerns in this county or other counties neighboring us that rely on natural gas. If there's no other comments or discussion, then we'll consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the special use permit based on the reasonableness determination that is included herein, including any additional conditions that may have been discussed and agreed upon incorporated into this motion to be included in the minutes and the board order.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the zoning request for case number 2024-22, what?
Special use permit.
Sorry, special use permit. All those in favor, please signify by raising the right hand. All those opposed, like, signed. There's no opposition, so the, and thank you very much. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we hear the next case. At this time, we're going to reconvene the meeting. Sorry. Our next case is case number 2024-23. Actually, Marzy, I should read the procedures first.
Would you like to?
Yes, I think I will. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of the planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by the planning board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approvals that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agencies, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, County Schools, Emergency Services, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda will be presented by the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the applicant will be given seven minutes to present the particulars of their request to the planning board. After the applicant is finished, we will hear from members of the public who have signed the case roster, and you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the roster. Each speaker will be given three minutes. After all the speakers have completed giving us their opinions or requests on the proposed zoning application, the applicant will be given an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Following that, the board will hold discussions on the merits of the zoning request, and that'll be followed by motion and voting. At this time, we're going to call upon staff to present our request for rezoning case number 2024-23.
Yes, this is rezoning 2024-23. It's a request to rezone the property from residential protected to highway commercial. The property has an address on it, though no structure currently. It's at 114 Will Road. It's in the Mayo Township, and this is a traditional rezoning, which means you need to consider all possible uses of the zoning district. Here in the vicinity map, that little black dot you can see is just outside the Mayodan ETJ. Here's the zoning in the area. This is a cluster of residential protected, surrounded by then residential agricultural, with just some, while there's heavy industrial up off the highway, mind you, there is highway commercial just across the highway on River Road as well in this vicinity. All that gray is the Mayodan ETJ. This is in our G3 land class. As we all know, the G3 land class calls for intensive development, you know, intense residential, intense commercial development up and down the corridor from Guilford all the way up to Virginia. Here's a quick aerial of the, the location. While it is surrounded by a lot of residential, it is off two roads right there on the corner. The lot is of size for highway commercial. But even though it's in the G3 land class, it does not have access to water sewer, at least not based on my maps and from what I understand in the area. But it has been zoned residential protected since 1988. That general area is, again, residential, residential agricultural. There's some commercial in the area. It's in our G3 class corridor. The land use plan does call for G3 to be mixed uses and intense uses. It also suggests areas in the G3 land class are suitable for wide variety of mixed uses to begin incorporating for that 20-year plan. The plan also calls for some economic development encouragement, especially in this corridor. For those reasons, staff has recommended approval just based on the surface facts of the plan, keeping in mind that it was a narrow margin while we were looking at it internally. Again, like I said, there is no water sewer, which is a big component of the G3 class to go towards more commercial and more intensity. However, due to the size of the parcel as well, taking account well septic and things like that, the available and more intensive uses and build out of the property with setbacks and everything would severely limit those uses as well. So taking everything into full range account, and just looking at everything based on our plan and it's, and the site information specific, staff felt that it just edged into a recommendation. We're not 100% sold on that. Staff would look more towards rural commercial or neighborhood commercial before they would look at highway commercial. But just based on the plan itself, that's why we're recommending approval.
Any questions for Marzy?
Just my justifications.
Did you get a lot of calls or emails about this?
We got plenty of phone calls. Victoria, how many?
Twenty.
Yeah, it was like 20-plus. We stopped counting at 20. All opposed.
All opposed?
All opposed. For various reasons, everything from transportation to this has always been agricultural area to, I don't want commercial in my backyard, to everything in between the sun. So all perfectly valid concerns of the public that we've been through plenty of times.
Is, that's a nice song, sir, but could you turn it off?
We're trying.
Okay. Is, is public water and sewer requirement in the UDO for, for commercial property, highway commercial?
It's not a requirement. The land use plan does indicate that the G3 corridor should be, have access available to water and sewer. That's why I pointed out. It's one of the negatives from the plan that goes towards this, but didn't say it had to be there. So that's why I didn't kill it as far as a recommendation. It's not a requirement. It's an expectation.
How far away is public water and sewer?
I do not know. I think there's public water from Mayodan, not too far away. And I know there's public sewer up at River Road. Whether Mayodan would allow someone to tap onto that and, or go down to it, I don't know. They're not our services at that point. They're still the municipal services. Our, our services are, start below Madison.
Well, in the, in the material that you provided us, it indicated what they were planning to do with that. Is there an anticipation that they would need water and sewer for that application?
For their specific intended use, that would be very minimal, based on my conversations with environmental health, as far as what they're necessary. For more intensive development, it'd be almost impossible to use that property.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, again, why, the way we looked at it, I mean, one can make the argument, too, that since it couldn't support every use in highway commercial, then it should be no. We look at the land use plan, y'all's responsibility is to look at potential uses through the UDO. So again, like I said, our recommendation is factually a yes, but we would prefer a lower intensity if it were to move forward.
Why wouldn't you use a neighborhood commercial and still be able to accommodate what their desire is?
I think they could. They came in wanting to apply for two possible zones. At one time, I told them they had to pick one. We wouldn't do an if in that, because that's not how we're set up to do. We're not set up to look at two cases, two possibilities at one time. Y'all can always make their recommendation that they seek out lower, and that can move forward. And the board commissioners can still apply it that way with the applicant willing. But, you know, when given the choice to either go for, you notice in the application, one's scratched out, the one's circled on their application page itself. It was, they had highway commercial slash rural commercial. I made them pick one, and that's why we're with highway commercial.
Do they own any of the other property around it?
Question for them. I don't believe so, but.
Can you put back the, the map that had the numbers of the properties on it?
This one?
No.
This one?
Yep. Never mind. I have that here. Sorry.
Yeah, it's in your packet, too.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
You indicated that there, on that, this parcel numbered 114 here that you have highlighted, that there was a structure on there. I don't, I don't see any structure on there.
Yeah, that's what I said. There used to be a structure. There's not currently one.
Used to, I'm sorry.
There used to be a structure on the property. That's why it has an address.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Standing.
How far away if, public, what, I mean, public utilities, how about electricity? I mean, does it have electric power to go into it?
Well, yeah, it can have power. There's, there's utility lines.
How far away is the water and sewer?
Like I said, I think-
Is it out on 135 there?
Well, Mayodan has sewer and water up on River Road. It's just the next intersection up, just north of here. But it's not ours. So it's up to the city whether they would do something with that or not.
I see.
As far as we're concerned, it doesn't have water sewer.
Okay.
Until such time as an agreement's produced. Again, like I said, just at face value of everything, and taken into strict constraint, the constraints of the property itself and the required setbacks that would be necessary, we feel that just at face value of our ordinances, staff had to recommend approval. On a, looking at everything from a microscopic scale, I don't think it would be approvable for all uses in highway commercial.
Not, not for, not for a reasonable stretch of the imagination would it be usable for highway commercial?
Well, not for all the uses in highway commercial. There are some uses in highway commercial that could still use the parcel.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Marzy? If not, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Is that Mr. Patel?
Yes, sir.
Now, after you give us your name and address for the record, you'll have seven minutes to present your request to us.
Okay, thank you. My name is Hamel Patel. I'm a resident at 140 Stones Point Court in Stokesdale, Rockingham County. And I've been a resident of Rockingham County for over 17 years. I own a gas station in Mayodan. It used to be the Exxon, it's the Shell now. And this property come to my attention because the previous owner is my mechanic, and I happened to buy it from him. And I'm planning to open up a boat and RV storage. So it is not going to have any need for water or sewer. All I'm going to be doing is grading it, putting gravel, fence, security fence, and necessary setbacks for landscaping and all, and automated keypad where people can open the gate, put their boat and RV, and park them over there. And the reason is, there is none in that area, and we have a lot of new development happening. If you see in that map, there's a big new neighborhoods coming up over there, and they do not allow residents to park their boats and RVs in their neighborhood. So that is why I was eager to build one in that area.
How many RVs or boats do you think you might be able to store there?
I have prepared a rough plan. What can happen is, can I give it, pass it around to everybody?
Thank you, sir. Is your, is your entrance into this coming off of Dan, Dan Valley Road, or is it coming off of Will Road?
Will Road, off of Will Road. Traffic, if I have the entrance coming from Dan Valley Road? Duke Energy provides light poles for you, so I'm planning on having one- Duke Energy provides light poles for you, so I'm planning on having one in every corner looking into the property.
I don't have four?
Four, possibly, yeah, and to begin with four, and then if requirement, if it needs requirement of two more, then add two more later down the road. But we'll have at least four to begin with on the four corners of the property.
With this drawing, did you consider the setbacks and the, uh...
No, not yet.
Our requirements for the county?
No, not yet.
This is just what you came up with?
Yeah, what I figured is, I probably have 208 by 208 length and width, so I use 150, 160, so we, we still have like 20, 20 feet of setback, 20, 30 feet of setback on it.
What is the setback for us here?
I can't remember directly off the, the right of way is, but the adjacent to residential's gonna be 50 feet. And keeping in mind, just to remind y'all, we have to consider all possibilities here. Specifics to his plan aren't up for consideration when making the determination on your recommendation. And again, also as a reminder, something like this probably would go to TRC for review due to its open to the public nature. Development out there would outside of a residential house.
I'm sorry?
Any development outside of a residential house would, regardless, on any property, go to TRC like that.
Any questions for Mr. Patel?
Yes.
John?
What provision have you made for the, say, if you have 35, potential 35 spots here, plus your office space, which will apparently be staffed by at least one person?
No, not, not really. It'll be a storage building, one of the storage buildings that House of Star or somebody have.
How do you account for people coming in and going out?
There'll be an automated keypad.
Oh, okay.
That'll account for...
All right, well, how, how do you, how do you provision for the potential need for your 35 customers to either fill or drain their water tanks on their RVs and boats or, or change the oil in, in these vehicles? How, how are you gonna handle that?
I will not be providing those services. They will only be just for parking.
So, they don't, they can't, they can't access any water there, or they can't do any maintenance there? Anything like that, right?
No, no. That'll be just for parking.
That seems unrealistic, I mean, that they shouldn't do that.
The thing is, they do not have access to, they're not allowed to park their RVs in their neighborhoods where they live because of the...
No, I mean, I'm saying on your site here, your, your, your site, they, they may need water and they may, they may need to do maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
But they're not permitted to do that?
I, I will not be providing water, because there is no water access on that property.
Oh, okay.
And there is no sewer either. And the office is just a little storage building that'll house the lawnmower or weed eater and basic tools.
Follow up on that question.
Just strictly storage, John, just strictly parking, storage. No, no services of any kind.
Okay.
It's basically a parking lot.
Thank you.
You're not gonna have any, anybody there monitoring to make sure that nobody's doing these things?
There's a camera system monitoring. And with being very quiet area, it'll require just a motion camera that records whenever there is motion, and it's a very quiet area, part of town, which I'm familiar with, so I don't think we'll have any problems with crime and criminal elements in that area.
Mr. Patel, do you have any other properties?
I have several properties in...
In proximity to that property?
Not proximity of that property, I have several properties in Mayodan.
Only thing, you have anything that you're...
No.
Okay.
New to this process, I had, I was not aware of how intense it is, but I'll respect whatever decision you make today.
Okay. Well, your time is up for now. You'll be allowed to another five minutes for rebuttal after we hear from the folks in the audience.
I would just like to make a comment regarding this case to Ms. Talbert about the previous case where you asked about the fire department and how they would respond. I'm a member of the Mayodan Fire Department, and we have this thing called a pre-plan. We have every businesses in our department in a file folder, picture, diagram, everything, with neighbors as potential dangers, and we have a plan of what engine it will park which place, so whenever there's an incident, we already have pre-plans made for those businesses. Every business has a pre-plan in our department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Daryl, any questions? State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Daryl Atkins, I live at 162 Will Road. I've been at, the property I built my house there in 1977, so been a while. I was born and raised on the road. My daddy bought property there in 1949. From Dan Valley Community Building, that whole area was known as Louton Development Land, so it's always been like it is, it's residential and some agriculture. And personally myself, I would love to see it stay that way. We, our road is a little, it's a Jones Dan Valley Road and Will Road, it's a little loop road that comes around. It's a little more than one lane wide, it's really not set up for a store or whatever to be built on. It's, it's not a main public road. We have, it's a trailer park at the end of it, it's a little dead end street. I think it's loving homes on our road, and I, I think it's eight or nine, best I could sell on my map on, on that, the little dead end street runs out behind Hayden Road. But a lot of kids use our road, you know, ride their bicycles, walking, I mean, it's more like a community, like a cul-de-sac setup, you know? So, in, in my opinion, I, I personally, I do have, don't have any problem if he wants to put a home on that land or wants to put apartment on it, but I don't think it ought to be changed to anything to do with commercial. I, I don't think our road is adequate enough to handle any more, I mean, right now, we probably have 50 or 60 calls a day, and, and basically, it's, it, it, it's good, it's, like I say, it's a good, quiet community. I was born and raised there, and right now, I own, like I said, my, I own my home, I own a home above me, I own a lot and a cabin and some buildings across the street from me and another lot, which will be right, right against this property. So, I have four properties on that street, but, and like I said, I don't, I don't have any trouble, problem if he wants to put a apartment or a house on it, to, that'll stay in the atmosphere of what the neighborhood is, but I, I personally, I don't wanna see it changed to anything commercial. And appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Randy, having trouble reading your last name?
Pruitt.
Pruitt, okay. And again, if you would, just for the record, state your name and address.
My name is Randy Pruitt. I live at 172 Will Road, I'm at the Upper Corner. As Daryl mentioned, our road is very laid back with little kids riding tricycles and bicycles, everybody kinda knows and looks after everybody, and it's a very small road. And I know HP, I love him, he's a good guy, but at the same time, I have a 30-foot camper that I have, that I have to bring in on Hayden Road. You cannot make that turn off of Dan Valley Road on to Will Road without dropping that camper in that ditch. So, all the traffic is gonna have to come Hayden and Will if he does what he says he's gonna do, 'cause you can't make the turn. The road is too small. So, I will bring that up as well, 'cause even when I bring in a 16-foot box trailer, I have to swing out on Dan Valley to make the turn. If you look at your map, that road cuts back, it's not a mighty turn, it makes a road back. So, with these things to think about, like I say, we got little kids that are used to just having a good time, we got people that walk their dog up and down, this is just a small little community road. It's not used to a lot of traffic, and if you start bringing campers in or boats, they're gonna have to come from the other side. You'll never make the turn, and if you do make the turn, your buddy-in's gonna be sticking out on Dan Valley Road, and you're gonna cause a problem. So, it's a big concern, not against him, if he wants to put a house there, it'd be great for another family to be there, but not for commercial property, it's just not set up for that. I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Robert Sharp?
I apologize for the telephone. I'm Robert Sharp, I live at 419 River Road, and that property's right across from our property. I'll have to say that Dan Valley Community is not new to commercial development, it's sort of a two-part community. Along 135, we've got Lowe's and the high school and Walmart, Burger King, McDonald's, all that stuff is on the north side of Dan Valley, and it's kind of a two-part community. The rest of it is residential. Now, this idea might be a good idea if it's somewhere else, but I just don't think it's a good idea to place a commercial venture in the middle of a residential, no neighborhood. It, it's been there, and that, that's why people live there. They wanted to get away from that. If they wanted to get, to, to go to the store, they go down, it's not far, we got Walmart right across the highway. This other development across 220, there's a big humongous housing community being built over there, that's gonna bring traffic. And all this development has been a benefit to us, but it's also been what it has done to us. And by that I mean traffic, loud traffic, hot rod traffic, we live on a drag strip, litter, light pollution. I can't sit on my back porch on the, when I was waiting to come down here and have to listen to somebody spinning out at the intersection, the black marks everywhere. It's just not the community it once was, so what I'm saying is, that is what has, development has done to us. And it seems to me that this might be a good idea as a, as a, as a business venture, but I just don't think this is the right location for it. It needs to be somewhere in a, in a place where it's, that's already zoned commercial, but highway commercial in this location is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pamela Watkins?
I'd like to give my time to Martha Ann Sharp, please.
Okay. David Stewart?
Give my time to Martha Ann Sharp also, please.
Okay. Ms. Sharp, you can only accept an extension from one person, so you have six minutes, and you may now come up and speak to the planning board.
Well, I wasn't gonna speak now anyway. And before my clock...
Would you stand a little bit to your left and...
Well, I didn't want, okay.
And for the record...
I need to deliver this first.
Oh, okay.
It is Dennis Moore, who lives on Dan Valley Road, was coming tonight, he has spoken to an attorney, I don't know who, and has quite a few petition signs. He had an accident, is at home hospital tonight, so he just wanted to send those. Okay.
For the record, please state your name and address.
I'm Martha Sharp, and I live at 419 River Road.
Like the planning board to know. What is it that you would like the planning board to know?
Well, first, I'm not against development. I sold a little, all they wanted, of land to Lowe's when they came. I'm a lifelong resident of the community. I own part of the field that fronts this parcel that we're discussing. I taught school for over 25 years in Rockingham County, and since I've retired, I've served on the board and as chair of hospice and on the board of ATS, ADTS, just to say, I care about the county, and not just the Western, I care about the entire county. And this is not about individuals, it's about the zoning issue, and as it's been alluded to, North Carolina says highway commercial standards could have used car lots, storage facilities, Dollar General, service stations, car washes. And at this time, I realize we're asking for boat and RV storage, but once it's rezoned, it can become any of these things. I know infrastructure has been brought up, but if I'm not mistaken, there are three points, three places within a half a mile that has infrastructure there now. I know it's not gonna come immediately, but the possibilities are there with municipality infrastructures at three different places within about a half a mile. Highway commercial zone in North Carolina, the state says they're designed to accommodate retail, services, and other uses that require good road access and high visibility. They're typically located along major arterial highways, and Dan Valley North River Road would be considered a major arterial highway. When you consider developing this, they should be designed, it says, to promote the safe and efficient movement of traffic. And within a tenth of a mile of this location, and now I understand Will Road would have the access rather than Dan Valley, but within a tenth of a mile of this, there is a four-way stop and there's a slight curve, and this is located in between. They should also look at impact on neighborhood restrictions, and the development should meet high standards. I understand the adjoining property to this is owned by the person who sold, Mr. Patel, which is fine, but I also understand that last week, his tenants on that land was told to look for other places to live. Safety issues, four-way stop, sometimes it's backed almost up to Will Road, not often. High school traffic comes through, the curve, if you're driving fast around that curve, traffic from Will Road would be in trouble, especially if they had boats and trailers and RVs. River Road, as you've heard, is almost a racetrack now. We're within a mile of Walmart, so there's additional traffic, and when he talks about security lighting, which I understand would be needed, we already have light pollution from Lowe's. We have a neighbor who said they don't even have to have a light to go to their barn at night because Lowe's lights are there. Present residential protected zone in, at this time. People value and appreciate peaceful living, serene, nature, neighborhoods. Dan Valley has been a neighborhood for over 65 years that I remember. We continue to hold monthly neighborhood meetings for over 60 years. Within a quarter of a mile of this place, there are four pastures with at least 20 or more horses. There are goats, there are chickens. Within a half a mile, several acres of soybeans and hay are farmed, farmed, and to plop a commercial zone in the midst is just unthinkable to me. There will also be some diminished value for our homes. And looking at the packet, and he's already alluded to it, but it says, and this is a quote, "As this property has been zoned residentially for many years, impacts from commercial uses may impact the surrounding residential area. Also, the allowed uses under highway commercial may be too intensive for the surrounding homes and area, especially considering lack of infrastructure, which I've already addressed." Requested updates, uses could lead to a negative impact on these properties, however, might be minor, not sure about that. So, once, I think all of our concerns is that once this is rezoned, it kinda opens up possibilities from adjoining land, from other things. I looked up Dollar General, they locate on a, on an acre, but this needs to remain residential protected, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Patel?
Yes, sir.
You have five minutes of rebuttal for the issues that were raised, to address them.
I respect all their statements and motions, and I'll respect the decisions you guys make, that's all I'm gonna say.
All right, before you go, I have some concerns based on the testimony of some of these concerned citizens. The biggest one I have is the gentleman that talked about making the 90-degree turn where the rear end of the vehicle would have to be in a ditch.
Mm-hmm.
Are you being a little unrealistic with the size of the vehicles that you intend to store in there?
We will be doing a study and making appropriate larger entrance, so vehicles can turn in and exit appropriately. It is just a matter of opening up the major, main entrance.
Yeah, so I, I looked at that property, and I've got one of the, I got a vehicle that would be in one of these big slots, and I have no idea how I'd get in there. Even with a big entrance, I'm not sure how I'd get in there. That, that was a concern that I had looking at that. And if I was pulling a trailer with a boat, that might work, but not a class A RV, I can't see how you'd do it.
Another concern I have, even though you have cameras and the fact that the property is unattended, let's just suppose for a minute I have a big RV sitting in the yard there, and I come in late in the afternoon and decide I'm going to change the oil in that vehicle, and I just let what's in the crankcase run out on the ground. There's no mechanism to stop that other than an agreement between you and the person that's leasing space from you.
Yeah, there'll be a contract...
Not to do it.
Yeah, there'll be a contract signed before the, as, it'll be part of the lease contract where these are things that not be allowed, and if these things happen, it'll be done at their responsibility. If, if they violate, it'll be a termination of lease, and they'll be liable for all the expenses incurred after that.
Now, actually, the county will be liable for cleaning it up, the citizens will be liable for cleaning up any biohazards that are spilled by negligence or, or criminal activity. That, and that's, you know, only the entity that has to clean it up, because a hazmat crew would have to come out and fix that. You know, you can't just find somebody, like, you can't find somebody for, for doing that and terminate the contract, somebody's going to have to come out and clean that up.
That'll be part of the insurance, that'll be in place for a facility like that. Insurances will be covering, liability insurances will cover stuff like that.
We, we have a lot of cases that come before this board where an entrepreneurial-minded person like yourself comes up with a great idea, but just picks the wrong location for it.
I think that is what the case is today, so...
I think so. This is, you know, I know, we've had, and we've approved plenty of RV and boat storage facilities in, in the last few years, but they're all in areas where there's other types of businesses and easy highway access in and out, and having to put this one on a small road residential development...
Well, and I think this one too is, it's not, you know, exactly apples to apples, but it's, it's comparable. Remember when we heard the case on Shelton Road, and they, it was the exact same thing, but because of the proximity, and this has been, what, three years ago, two years ago?
Yeah, three.
Two years ago, and because of the proximity to residents, we approved it. The, oh, no...
No, you recommended denial. The board upheld it.
And the, and the commissioners upheld that. So, yeah, I, even though this is, you know, in proximity to that corridor, and we talk about that corridor all the time, I'm, I'm thinking we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole.
Any other, excuse me, any other questions for Mr. Patel? Thank you, sir. I don't, wait a minute, I didn't have a check mark against a gentleman, Kevin Wilson? Did you wish to speak, sir? I'm sorry, I didn't...
I can't, since I's already on the list. My name's Kevin Wilson, I'm, I live at 459 Dan Valley Road, I've been there for 20 years. I've been there, I own land right across the road from that property, and I was opposed to it being commercial. Like I said, I would see further benefit for a residential house or something like that.
Okay, so thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, once again, I think, Marcy.
Yeah, I was going to say, for the record, she presented a petition with 34 different signatures, so 34 individual unique signatures against, from the surrounding community, checked the addresses and the names, so. Just that, just for the record, since we didn't get to say it while she's, my Ms. Sharp presented it, so.
We have 34 more opposed.
Some overlapping, but yes.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to reiterate, from a staff perspective, the recommendation's solely based on the land use plan and not the actual merits of the location.
Well, unfortunately, this sounds like one of those deals where, as I just said to Mr. Patel, he's a very entrepreneurial-minded person with good intentions, and he's got a great idea, but it's just the wrong place for it.
Right, and I suspect every once in a while, we'll see these things crop up more with the girth of that, that development corridor, so...
Yeah.
I have a comment, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Corey Scott.
So having drove over by Wheel Road today, you know, you talked about how wonderful that neighborhood is, and I've, you know, been only a few places in the county where I've seen more, you know, what I'd say, trash and, and stuff in the yards, and so if you have a community that you get together, you might want to address that with the neighbors, because I was, I was kind of disappointed at everything else that looked good around it, but up and down Wheel Road. And so you all talked about how great it was, but I think there's some work that has to be done, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Callahan, next.
I motion to recommend denial of this request to rezone the specified parcels to the requested zoning district, contrary to the consistency and reasonable determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet. Submitting during this rezoning presentation and is may be incorporated into the, the motion to be included into the minutes.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to deny this request for rezoning. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so the motion or the request is denied. No business, we have a review and adopt the 2025 planning board meeting schedule. Oh, yeah, well, he's already left, so... He'll be, he'll be notified anyway. Adoption of the 2025 planning board meeting schedule?
I put together the schedule, tried taking into account all the holidays for next year that may pop up on a Monday where we're concerned, and got us some to-be-determined dates for 2026 as far as submittals for the January 12th of 2026 meeting. This, if you agree to this and approve it, it'll go onto the board of commissioners' consent agenda November or December for them to officially recognize our calendar for next year.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Seconded to approve the 2025 calendar, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like, sign. No opposition, so go ahead and send it to the commissioners, Marcy. And we have no old business, so now is our time for our favorite motion.
So move.
For you folks, that's the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Meeting's over.
Wait a minute, you didn't vote.